The committee of the whole to order for October 27th. Can I get a roll call, please?
Kennedy.
Here.
Montanari.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Mal.
Here.
Nurse.
Here.
Wheeler Roman.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Gird.
Here.
Okay, you have an agenda before you. You will notice that it's a somewhat meaty agenda, so I'm going to ask everybody to be conscientious about your time so that we can get through both of our topics today. And with that, I know we're waiting on a few people, but I'm wondering if Councilmember Rice can maybe give us an intro and...
I'm happy to give you an intro, and I do want to say, our guests are from out of town. When we were originally planning this, and the date for this meeting was at 2:00, we had worked ahead of time to schedule a luncheon panel discussion at Stetson University. So everybody's trying to wrap up and leave from that as quickly as possible, and they're looking for parking spaces right now. So we're just working with the changed timeline. I'm happy to get started, and we'll see what, hopefully, they roll in. As you all know, even before being elected, I was president of the League of Women Voters and active with the local and state League of Women Voters for a long time. I was compelled by that work because I thought that nonpartisan, good government, fair elections issues are some of the most important foundational and fundamental issues that we can work on, and some of the most important issues to build trust and a sense of effectiveness of our local government, our laws, and our policies. So, and previously, I've brought other campaign finance reform measures to this council. And interestingly, one of the reasons why we decided not to go forward with a local campaign contribution cap was why do that if someone can just turn around and give unlimited money to a super PAC? So I bring this issue to you again today. It's a, the ordinance does two things. The ordinance itself is fairly simple, not too difficult. Number one, it tackles the use of foreign corporate money in local elections, and that a corporation contributing over $5,000 must verify that it's not partly foreign-owned. Secondly, this proposal, this ordinance proposes to limit super PAC spending so that it's no more than $5,000, where it's not so super anymore. So a question here might be, to anticipate some questions, is it within the role or the purview of city council municipal-based leadership to poke the bear at Citizens United? What is our role as local leaders? We certainly have well-defined and important responsibilities. We manage and we lead. We manage about almost a $550 million budget. We ensure public safety. Our firefighters and police are very important. We demand accountability and oversight. We make sure that our infrastructure is working for our citizens. We'll have another big discussion about that in a little bit today. And we look out for our future, and we are constantly looking out for taxpayer values. We plan and we oversee major capital projects. But looking over the functions, excuse me, over the functions of our local democratic elections is our purview as well. There are prescriptions in our city charter regarding elections, redistricting, nonpartisan elections, terms of office, number of districts, residency, initiatives, referendums, recalls, petitions, dates of elections. The charter further sets forth how council further addresses other election issues by ordinance. So I believe reviewing campaign finance laws is an important way for us to continue to look out for the health of our local democracy. The proliferation of super PAC money is coming to local elections. We'll hear a little bit more about that from our speakers today. And it's ubiquitous. We see it on the left, we see it on the right. You can take a list of the top contributors to super PACs in the country. You could close your eyes and just pick a name on that list, and you're just as likely to find someone who contributes to democratic causes as you do conservative ones. But this is at our doorstep, and are we ready for it? Do we want it? Is there something that we can do to fend off the influence of unregulated, dark money, unlimited corporate money in elections? Given the level of cynicism towards government, leadership, politics, and especially among our youth, especially among our youth, I would argue that we cannot risk alienating ordinary citizens from trusting and feeling invested and a part of their local democratic institutions. We have got big problems to solve, and we need everybody. And what we don't need is dark money and unlimited corporate money infused in local elections. Now, of course, campaign law can be a bit complex, and we will be joined today by national experts in constitutional, corporate, and campaign finance law who can help answer these questions, to put this ordinance in perspective, to explain relevant case law, and to explain some of the larger ramifications of this work. I hope you all can appreciate that we do have special guests here today, including FEC Commissioner Ellen Weintraub, who traveled far to be with us today, and we're fortunate to benefit from their insight and experience. But we are not going to get everything done today. I am not asking for a vote today. I hope that we can get the best overview possible to lay out issues and set ourselves up for a secondary, robust discussion in the coming weeks or after the new year. Most of all, I ask my colleagues to keep an open mind, to be patient as we wade through these legal issues, to be bold instead of skeptical, curious instead of doubtful, courageous in forward-thinking as policymakers, and to the extent that we should always be cautious and planful and conservative. Let's apply that sense of caution and conservatism to the threat of dark money and foreign money in our local elections. I think we can do it. I think we should do it, and we have some very qualified people here to help discuss it. And while we're waiting for them, a couple of the people who will be arriving soon, and then we do have someone on Skype, Professor Coats, can you hear me okay? We are going to be joined by Commissioner Ellen Weintraub of the Federal Election Commission, Professor Al Schuler of the University of Chicago Law School, who has just walked in, who is an expert in corporate corruption law and an author of several books. Come on in and sit down, Al. We have with him Scott Gretek, who's counsel for Free Speech for People. And on Skype, we have Professor John Coats of Harvard Law School. Hi, Professor. So I know, sorry, guys, I know you just sat down, but I just went through my introduction. And Scott, as you are pulling your papers out, I thought the next best thing that we could do was maybe have you do a very quick run-through of some of the letters of support and the information that council has received, and maybe just give us like a quick overview of putting these letters in some context.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Great to be here, first of all. Thank you for having me back. It's great to be back here. So the materials that have been sent out, there should be eight letters in total. Sorry for filling your inboxes with so many PDFs, but they are, in no particular order, a letter from Professor Joseph Morrissey from Stetson University College of Law that talks about recent trends in both Florida, Florida's local elections and local elections around the country of super PAC spending. There is a report from Stephen Weissman. He is a political scientist out of DC who has a background in campaign finance and election reform work, where really, for the first time, they looked at contribution trends and the folks who contribute to candidates, and then how those same folks or same organizations give to super PACs. And it shows that if folks will give to a candidate and say max out that candidate contribution, they'll then turn and use a super PAC as a related or another means of spending to influence that race, even though super PACs are supposedly independent organizations. So that report goes into detail on big national trends and federal spending in that regard. Then we have Professor Al Schuler's letter, and he's going to give much more detail on that, talking about the Speech Now decision. A letter from Professor Larry Tribe of Harvard Law School that talks about the legal theories behind the ordinance, talks about its constitutionality and its soundness as policy. Then we have Commissioner Weintraub, who just joined us, who has submitted a letter about the legal theories behind the foreign corporate spending part of the ordinance, as well as talking about the constitutionality of that part of the ordinance. And then we have Professor Coats, who you'll also be hearing from, whose letter focuses on the foreign corporate spending piece, and also through, you know, working on this, came out with original research that shows of the S&amp;P 500, they had researchers who looked at that as the data set, and were able to see, you know, what, how foreign ownership really plays out in big corporations in America, and what level of ownership for nationals or majority-owned corporation, majority foreign-owned corporations, you know, what that picture looks like. It's the first time we've had data put together on that, so he'll be talking about that report. And then finally, is a letter put together by Larry Tribe discussing the idea of legislative immunity for both council member and staff, as that's been raised before, so addressing that head-on. And that rounds it out.
We look forward to hearing your comments on this to start this off. Thank you.
Could you please turn the mics up? We can't hear the background. Thank you. Is it on? I have no idea how the mic works.
It's on.
It's on? Okay.
I don't believe, ma'am, just so you know, I don't believe they're mics for like the room. I think they're mics for the TV, so I'm not sure.
Ah, okay. Well, then I will try to speak loudly so that everyone in the room can hear me. Hello.
Hello.
It's nice to be here. My name is Ellen Weintraub. I am a commissioner on the United States Federal Election Commission in Washington, DC, and I thank you all for this opportunity to comment on the Defend Our Democracy ordinance that you are considering. I want to first congratulate Vice Chair Rice for bringing this ordinance before you. This measure takes on two important issues in campaign finance, super PACs and foreign money. I well understand the concern about the increasingly influential role of super PACs in our elections. At the federal level, we are awash in super PAC funds. Super PACs have spent $1.9 billion in federal elections since 2010, according to the Center for Responsive Politics, and the Associated Press reported earlier this year, this week, that of the $1.7 billion raised for the presidential race this year, only one-third of it came from unlimited donations to super PACs or dark money groups that disclose even less than the super PACs do. The Wall Street Journal did a deep dive into the reports filed at the FEC last week. They found that 23 billionaires have spent $88 million on the presidential campaign. That's more than 700 times as much as they could have given if they were just giving directly to the candidate. Now, some look at the overall amount of money spent by outside groups and say that it's just a fraction of the total spending. It is, but one-third is a pretty seriously large fraction. And bear in mind that the vast majority of the money is spent on, overall, is spent on safe seats. It's the small slice of competitive races where the money can affect the outcome, where it's really in doubt who's going to win, that you have to watch the outside, where you have to watch the outside money very carefully, because the outside spenders don't waste their money on the safe seats. So take your US Senate race here in Florida this year, pretty competitive, just over $40 million has been spent in that race by outside groups. But for the safe Senate seats in Oklahoma and Washington, just to name two, zero outside spending. So it just flocks to the races where it could most make a difference. While most people think about outside spending groups like super PACs in relation to congressional and presidential races, we are increasingly seeing these types of groups active at the state and local levels as well. And a recent study by the Brennan Center finds that in 2014, in the state races they examined, only 29% of outside spending was fully transparent, way down from 76% in 2006. So the trend lines are not good here. Now, Professor Al Schuler is going to talk more about the super PAC provisions of the proposed ordinance, but I would like to particularly address the provisions that relate to the foreign ownership and control of entities that seek to spend in your elections. This ordinance will make St. Petersburg a leader in the United States faltering efforts to respond to the corporate and foreign money that has been flowing into our elections since the 2010 Citizens United decision. In this tumultuous political year, foreign influence on American elections has emerged as an area of great concern to the American people. Our intelligence agencies indicate that a foreign government has stolen and disclosed emails from a national party committee and persons associated with a presidential campaign in an attempt to disrupt our election. We have seen similar reports of foreign hacks of state voter registration data, and we may have spotted the tip of the iceberg in foreign political spending, the true size of which is obscured by a sea of dark money. Reporters are just starting to really dig into this issue, and they are finding that foreign money is being spent. But we don't know how much. The proliferation of dark money groups in the wake of Citizens United has made it impossible to know the sources of all the funds flooding into our political system. It would be best to have more complete transparency for political spending. But this proposal to require political spenders to just verify and certify that they are not spending foreign money is a relatively modest, but extremely welcome and important first step toward that goal. The proposed ordinance is well-drafted, on target, and very important. I am sorry to report that is the sort of reform that may only succeed at the local and state levels at the moment, as ideological opposition to campaign finance law enforcement has effectively paralyzed both the FEC and Congress. I'm personally gratified that this proposed ordinance follows the arguments that I laid out in a New York Times op-ed in March, which highlighted the risk of foreign actors influencing our politics through corporate political contributions. In a nutshell, the op-ed pointed out that the Citizens United majority protected the First Amendment rights of corporations as, quote, "associations of citizens." But the people behind corporate political spenders are not always US citizens, and the resources they use may well be owned by foreigners. Under longstanding federal law, foreign nationals are absolutely barred from spending directly or indirectly in US elections at any political level, including the municipal level. Since the court held that a corporation's right to participate in elections flows from the collective rights of its individual shareholders and owners to participate, it follows that limits on those individuals' rights must also flow to the corporation. You don't lose rights when you associate in the corporate form, but you don't gain them either. As I read Supreme Court precedent, ownership matters. When a US-based company is owned by foreigners, the US managers, even if they're US citizens, would be breaching their fiduciary duties if they spent company resources other than in the best interests of their foreign owners. In the 2014 Hobby Lobby case, the Supreme Court wrote, quote, "An established body of law specifies the rights and obligations of the people, including shareholders, officers, and employees, who are associated with a corporation in one way or another. When rights, whether constitutional or statutory, are extended to corporations, the purpose is to protect the rights of these people," end quote. It matters whose rights are being protected, and whether the people who own or control corporations have the right to participate in our elections at all, and foreign nationals do not. The notion that ownership can indicate control is not a novel idea in the law. Other areas of law specify various ownership levels that may be deemed a controlling interest. For example, federal securities law considers the purchase of a 5% share of a corporation to be significant and worthy of disclosure. Communications law limits foreign ownership of entities seeking broadcast licenses to a 20% share. So your proposed ordinance, while pathbreaking, draws on well-established principles of law. Foreign ownership of US corporate assets is not an abstract concern. Now, I know we're going to hear from him directly, but the brilliant Harvard Corporate Law Professor John Coats came to the FEC in June and gave us important information there. He said then, about $12 trillion in assets owned by US companies are controlled by foreign owners, and went on to note the astonishing increase in foreign ownership of US corporate stock. And I'm going to quote him, "Back to 1982, about 5% of all the US corporate stock was held or controlled by foreigners. Now it's up to 25," end quote. I wrote my New York Times op-ed to highlight the need for the FEC to kick off a rulemaking that would gather comment from the public and help the commission draw the lines in the right places. Since 2010, despite many efforts, we have been unable to write rules to respond to the seismic shift that Citizens United created in campaign finance law. State and local governments have stepped into the breach and are leading the way in innovative responses to campaign finance issues. New York City's public financing system set the standard in 1989 when it provided matching funds, multiple matching funds for candidates for city office, and that system has proven successful and has been widely emulated. More recently, in 2015, Seattle voters passed a first-of-its-kind public campaign finance initiative that goes well beyond the matching funds. Starting in January 2017, Seattle voters will each be issued four $25 democracy vouchers that they can use to support candidates in the local 2017 election. And I was just reading moments ago on my, an update on my phone from the Campaign Finance Institute that shows that this and other initiatives in Washington are transforming the way campaigns are going to be funded, and moving money away from special interests and to the people, and moving power to the people at the same time. So now, here, we have St. Petersburg and this ordinance. By focusing the foreign national provisions on disclosure, the city of St. Petersburg is on strong legal footing. The proposed disclosure does not bar any spending, it merely requires corporations that seek to spend in St. Petersburg elections to certify that they are following pre-existing federal law barring political spending by foreign nationals in municipal elections. This is fully in keeping with Citizens United's prescription for greater transparency in political spending. As the court wrote, quote, "Disclosure permits citizens and shareholders to react to the speech of corporate entities in a proper way. This transparency enables the electorate to make informed decisions and give proper weight to different speakers and messages," end quote. It's important to note that First Amendment concerns are not implicated by a bar on foreign political spending. In Bluman v. FEC, a 2011 decision affirmed by the Supreme Court, a special three-judge DC District Court held that, quote, "The United States has a compelling interest for purposes of First Amendment analysis in limiting the participation of foreign citizens in activities of American democratic self-government, and thereby preventing foreign influence over the US political process," end quote. The court noted that, again quoting, "The government may bar foreign citizens, at least those who are not lawful permanent residents of the United States, from participating in the campaign process that seeks to influence how voters will cast their ballots in the elections," end quote. I applaud St. Petersburg taking a leadership role on this important question in American political life. By adopting these requirements, you will set an example that can be followed by others at the state, federal, and local levels. By passing this ordinance, you will be doing, not just your city, but your country, a great service. Personally, I'm jealous that you have this opportunity to act. Be bold, take the initiative. I thank you for considering this ordinance and for letting me come and testify here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. It's really such an honor to have you here with us today, and we're just really grateful to hear from you more as we discuss this. I have Professor Al Schuler next on our list for a presentation. I'm from the University of Chicago Law School and a well-published expert on anti-corruption issues.
Well, thank you very much. My role this afternoon, as I understand it, is not to discuss all aspects of the proposed ordinance, but just to address concerns that limiting contributions to super PACs might be held unconstitutional. And I can't tell you that there's no risk of an adverse constitutional ruling in a case called SpeechNow.org against FEC. The US Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit held limits on contributions to super PACs unconstitutional, and several other courts have approved the DC Circuit's decision. But the US Supreme Court hasn't ruled on the question, and neither has any other court that might rule on the St. Petersburg ordinance, in particular, the Florida Supreme Court and the US Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit. I believe that Speech Now was wrongly decided, and I also believe the Supreme Court is likely to say so if a way can be found to present the issue to the court. I prepared a written statement that explains my position in great detail. I hope you all have received it. And second, I'll just say a few words about what seems to me to be the crazy state of the law. As things stand now, a federal law bars hedge fund manager Donald Sussman from giving $6,000 to Hillary Clinton's presidential campaign. Federal law also bars hedge fund manager Robert Mercer from giving $6,000 to Donald Trump's presidential campaign. The Supreme Court upheld the law limiting contributions to candidates 40 years ago in Buckley against Valeo. But federal law did not bar Donald Sussman from giving $21 million to Priorities USA Action this year. Now, that's a super PAC whose principal mission is to place ads urging voters to support Clinton. And federal law did not bar Robert Mercer from giving $15.5 million to Make America Number One. Now, that's a super PAC that supported Ted Cruz in the Republican presidential primaries and now seeks votes for Trump. A federal statute once limited contributions to super PACs to $5,000 a year, but Speech Now held this statute unconstitutional. Although super PACs are forbidden from coordinating their expenditures with those of an official election campaign, the managers of these groups usually understand that their job is to attack an opponent while their favored candidate takes a higher road. These groups have become the provocateurs and attack dogs of modern politics. The candidates they support needn't take responsibility for what they say. The groups usually disappear once an election is over. The attack ads they produce contributes to the nation's cynicism about politics. So limiting contributions to candidates while permitting unlimited contributions to super PACs looks upside down. After Speech Now, limits on contributions don't restrict how much people like Sussman and Mercer can give to electoral efforts, but they do require these contributors to channel their funds to less responsible and more destructive speakers. No sane legislator would vote in favor of this regime of campaign financing, and no legislator ever has. We have this regime because Speech Now held that the First Amendment requires it. And yet, the thought that the Constitution requires it looks pretty loopy, too. According to the Supreme Court, Congress can prohibit a $6,000 contribution to an official campaign because this contribution is corrupting or creates the appearance of corruption. But according to the DC Circuit, Congress cannot prohibit a $10 million contribution to a super PAC because this contribution does not give rise to corruption or the appearance of corruption. Clinton and Trump would be corrupted by $6,000 contributions to their campaigns, but they're not corrupted by $10 million to their alter ego super PACs. Well, how did we get to this crazy place? In the Speech Now decision, the DC Circuit did not offer a word in defense of the merits of its ruling. It just said that a single sentence in the Supreme Court's opinion in Citizens United against FEC compelled it to reach the result it did. The Supreme Court had said, "We now conclude that independent expenditures do not give rise to corruption or the appearance of corruption." Notice that the Supreme Court's statement concerned independent expenditures, not contributions. Contrary to popular belief, Citizens United didn't say anything at all about political contributions. For 40 years, the Supreme Court has distinguished between contributions and expenditures. It's consistently struck down expenditure limits while upholding most- It's consistently struck down expenditure limits while upholding most contribution limits. But SpeechNow treated the Supreme Court's statement that independent expenditures don't corrupt as the major premise of a syllogism. It said, "If independent expenditures don't corrupt, the contributions that make those expenditures possible can't corrupt either." It doesn't matter that different standards of review apply to contributions and expenditures. The government has no interest in regulating either one. The court said, "Something beats nothing every time." Now, it seems to me that the D.C. Circuit's supposed syllogism isn't true. Contributions to super PACs can corrupt, even when expenditures by these groups don't corrupt. Consider the bribery indictment that's now pending against United States Senator Robert Menendez. It alleges that a Florida doctor gave hundreds of thousand dollars to a super PAC supporting Menendez in return for Menendez's advocacy on behalf of the doctor in some Medicare billing disputes. Well, this indictment makes perfectly clear that a contribution to a super PAC can corrupt. And notice that the indictment has no suggestion that the super PAC that received the contribution did anything wrong or that this group's expenditures corrupted the senator. Contrary to the arguments advanced by the D.C. Circuit, contributions to super PACs can corrupt, even when super PAC expenditures do not. The bottom line of the SpeechNow decision was that neither super PAC expenditures nor contributions to super PACs create even the appearance of corruption. And in my view, developments since the SpeechNow decision have made that proposition untenable. Many Americans now seem convinced that political contributions by wealthy people have led to tax breaks, trade agreements, immigration regulations, and other measures that benefit the 1%, while they harm ordinary Americans. Denunciations of Wall Street, super PACs, big banks, Hollywood, Silicon Valley, the Koch Brothers, George Soros, Citizens United, the billionaire class, and other villains are now commonplace. In this year's Democratic presidential primaries, a 74-year-old senator who described himself as a democratic socialist received more than 12 million votes, 43% of the votes cast. This candidate's refusal to accept any support from super PACs was a prominent feature of his campaign. By the end of the campaign, audiences were chanting with him, "The amount of the average contribution he'd received, $27." This candidate said of his opponent, "Are you qualified to be President of the United States when you're raising millions of dollars from Wall Street, whose greed, recklessness, and illegal behavior helped to destroy our economy?" This year's Republican presidential nominee emphasized during his primary campaign, "I'm self-funding my campaign. I'm not getting millions of dollars from all these special interests and lobbyists and donors, but once they get it, they literally do whatever the politicians want. That's not going to happen," this candidate said in a primary debate. "These super PACs are a disaster, by the way, folks, very corrupt. There's total control of the candidates. I know it better than anybody that probably ever lived." He tweeted, "I wish good luck to all the Republican candidates that traveled to California to beg for money, et cetera, from the Koch Brothers." Puppets. And Sheldon Adelson is looking to give big dollars to Rubio because he feels he can mold him into his perfect little puppet. I agree. Last week, final presidential debate of 2016, the Republican candidate said to the Democratic candidate, "I sat there watching ad after ad, false ad, all paid for by your friends on Wall Street that gave you so much money because they know you're going to protect them." In stump speeches, he referred to this candidate as Crooked Hillary. The Democratic candidate voiced similar concern about the corrupting influence of unlimited political contributions. She said, "We need a Supreme Court that will stand up and say no to Citizens United, a decision that has undermined the election system in our country." In a February 2016 survey, 61% of likely voters agreed that most members of Congress were willing to sell their votes for either cash or a campaign contribution. The same percentage said it was likely their own representative had done the same thing. In a September 2015 survey, 75% of respondents agreed that corruption was widespread in government. That number was grown from 66% in 2009. In an October 2012 survey, 59% of voters in 54 competitive congressional districts agreed that when somebody gives $1 million to a super PAC, they want something big in return from the candidates they are trying to elect. In an April 2012 survey, focusing specifically on super PACs, 68% of respondents agreed that a company that spent $100,000 to help elect a member of Congress could successfully pressure him to change a vote on a proposed law. Well, the appearance of corruption seems to me is everywhere. It's ripping America apart, and SpeechNow was wrongly decided. But the issue will not come before the Supreme Court if public officials simply acquiesce in the SpeechNow decision and allow the continuing spread of super PACs into federal, state, and local elections. I hope that this city council will lead the way in safeguarding our political system from the dangers posed by unlimited contributions to super PACs, and I hope you will approve the proposed ordinance.
Professor Al Schuler, thank you so much for joining us today. We're really glad to have you here. Does it make sense to go next with Professor Coats? Okay. Can Professor Coats, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Very good. Thank you. Let me know if I'm speaking too loudly or too soft. And I very much appreciate the opportunity to testify in favor of the ordinance and also regret that family medical commitments keep me from being there in person. I'd very much like to have been there. If I ordinarily would have done that. I'm going to be relatively brief. There's a written submission that will lay out what I'm about to say in more detail. I'll make three points. First, by way of my background, I teach corporate law. I worked on Wall Street for a long time before coming to Harvard as a partner of Oktel Lipton. I teach in the business school as well as the law school. And prior to Citizens United, I happily ignore campaign finance, except as a citizen watching it from a distance. Since Citizens United, as you've already heard and you know, corporations have become much more active and now can become much more active in our campaign system. And as a result, I've attempted to bring to bear some of my corporate thinking, research to the issue, which, for the traditional past, has been overseen by people who's interested in elections. And hopefully, I can add a little bit of light on issues that you may have about practicality. So my three points are going to be that the ordinance is feasible. The ordinance is aimed at a potentially real problem. And the ordinance, I believe, here of more opinion, but I firmly believe it, is good for business as well as for our electoral system. About feasibility, I will say simply that most companies in the U.S., whoever owns them, are privately owned, meaning there's one or a small number of shareholders. And for those companies, the companies themselves have stock letters, and they can readily identify whether they have foreigners or not. For public companies, the identity of their shareholdings is less easily attainable by them because most shareholders don't own directly but through institutions. But as I lay out in the submission, for the kinds of requirements that the ordinance calls for, existing SEC disclosure requirements and SEC ownership provisions will allow, in the vast majority of businesses, public companies to very readily identify whether or not they're foreign-controlled as defined in the proposed ordinance. And then finally, I'll note the obvious of feasibility, which is that the ordinance contains, I think, advisedly, simply the requirement of certification after due inquiry. And so companies that might be foreign-influenced but which, even after due inquiry, can't identify that would nevertheless be able to take certification-type qualifying languages by common in the corporate context for similar reasons in other regulatory means at the federal and state level. That's feasibility. And if you take questions, if people have more specific worries about that. What about potential concerns addressed by the ordinance? There, as was alluded earlier, there's good aggregate data, sort of taking companies as a whole, put out by the Federal Reserve, that shows that foreign ownership is increasing significantly over time on all U.S. corporations. Portfolio Advents reported in a Fed publication that I drew upon, it's not my research, from last March, shows that portfolio ownership has gone from 5% to 25% over the last 30 years, on average. IRS data, which also is based on aggregate filings of not individualized companies, but just IRS summaries of what filers were showing, shows that 83,000 U.S. corporations filing tax returns have a majority foreign-operating in the U.S. And that's the $12 billion number that was referred to earlier today. Those 83,000 U.S. companies report controlling $12 trillion in assets and have an equally very large amount of revenues and income. And then most recently, just actually in a couple of weeks, some students here at Harvard and some colleagues at Free Speech for People and I went through the S and P 500's SEC filings to establish how often we could find clearly identified foreign institutional owners of 5% or more of the stock. And we were able to identify one in a million such companies. And the S and P 500 is large companies that are chosen to represent kind of the core of the U.S. economy. And so these are major institutions, many names familiar to you. 30% of the institutional, 5% block holders are foreign in the overall institutional ownership. And five of those companies have a 20% or greater foreign owner or a group of foreign owners. These are nominally fully public companies, meaning you wouldn't expect to see a controlling shareholder there. And there aren't too many with controlling shareholders, although there are some. But the level of foreign ownership is neither trivial, whereas it's common. Most companies don't have foreigners. But bottom line, that research confirms, the IRS data, Fed data, that this is a significant potential concern for the use of corporate money in youth elections. I'll just note an anecdote which you may be familiar with. Uber is more than 5% owned by the Saudi Arabian Kingdom. Uber is heavily involved in local elections. It's dumped, along with Lyft, more than $9 million into an Austin ballot initiative. This is a perfect example of a privately owned, more than 5% owned and influenced foreign company directly attempting to influence elections in the United States. It may well be that the Saudi Arabian government has no different of an interest than the U.S.-based owners of Uber. But as a general matter, it seems to me, once you get above 5% ownership, you're increasing significantly the risk that that foreign ownership could influence an interest over elections that would be different from those of U.S. citizens. Final point, ordinance is a good idea for business. I don't think most U.S. businesses want to compete on the basis of nationalist politics. I think people who go to the business school, who want to run companies and innovate, find ways to cut costs and deliver better services, they're not interested in competing in the electoral game. If they were, they would go into electropolitics. Businesses mostly don't want to be involved directly in elections in this way, in my opinion. That's why more than half of the S and P 500 now voluntarily discloses the degree to which they are involved in elections, and most of them, in fact, don't directly contribute, even through independent expenditures. But they may have no choice. Yes, the competitive environment leads to legislation, regulation, often at the direction or under the influence of electoral politics that tilts the playing field in favor of particular companies who are active or not. They have to play a defensive game if their competitors are playing an offensive game. And so from my perspective, and I think from talking to many businesspeople over the years, from their perspective, they would rather there be a nice wall between elections and business. Yes, they should influence policy through the normal lobbying channels, through speech, actual speech, as opposed to being forced directly in the electoral game. And I'm stopped there.
Thank you, Professor Coats. Thank you for joining us. Next, we'll go to Scott Greatak, counsel for Free Speech for People.
Thank you. And again, it's great to be back to speak to you folks again. So I want to serve two purposes here. One is to talk about the record of super PAC spending in Florida elections and also to talk about how super PACs have spent on the local level across the country, to give an idea of just how prevalent this is. And more importantly, the ordinance that you're reviewing, I've reviewed it closely, and I've taken a look at how Florida law interacts with it and how some of the details in the ordinance have been drawn out. So to the extent that there are particular numbers that are used in the ordinance, please consider me a resource for any technical, specific questions about how some of these numbers were reached or how it may operate in practice. So to the first point, research into spending by super PACs on the federal level has shown that some $33 million has come from Floridians to super PACs in federal elections. And that in federal races, super PACs have spent about $27 million in Florida in this last cycle alone. We know that there are about 1,000 political committees or electronic communications organizations that are active in Florida, about 40 of which are registered in Pinellas County. Super PAC spending in Florida outside of the federal level has taken place in every corner of the state. We've seen the Gainesville City Commission and the Elatua City Commission, County Commission, recently adopted lower contribution limits to try and decrease the influence of big money in their politics, only to have super PACs sprout up in their absence and to then start spending all this money that couldn't be given directly to candidates through contributions. In Miami-Dade County, we saw two county judicial races attract a third of a million dollars in super PAC fundraising. These were county-level judges who sometimes have dozens, if not hundreds, of cases in front of the folks who are giving to these super PACs. The Miami Herald actually said that the election cycle was defined by folks giving more money in judicial elections than ever before. We've seen super PACs active in Melbourne Beach, in Viera, in Palm Beach County. In fact, a Palm Beach County-based super PAC has spent $160,000 on elections this year so far, including in Pinellas County for one of the school board races here. This has unfortunately been the case in a lot of other jurisdictions across the country. In fact, it's increasingly becoming the norm. So you see races now in Baton Rouge, $100,000 on the mayoral race. Las Cruces, Mexico, which has a population of a little over 100,000, saw a huge amount of money come in from a super PAC immediately before Election Day. You see it on big mayoral races, Philadelphia, $10 million, down to down-ballot races. The Oklahoma City City Council saw $400,000 spent by super PACs recently. You see two school board races in Denver attracting over $100,000. You see a race for a district attorney attracting $100,000 from super PAC. Democrat or Republican, big or small, there seems to be no basis for discriminating between where super PACs are now being used. And of course, as we know, these are not aggregators of small contributions on behalf of thousands and thousands of folks. These are mechanisms that are used by a small group of wealthy folks to try and have an outsized influence on elections. So Professor Coats referenced Uber as an example of a corporation that has significant foreign ownership and why that can be a danger to democratic self-government. I would also raise up the example of Airbnb, the homestay corporation that has locations all across the world. We know that they have significant ownership from a Moscow-based corporation, and they have put aside $11 million into a super PAC in New York State right now to spend on legislative races leading up to the November 8 election. In fact, on a daily basis, over a third of a million dollars are being spent on state senate races in that state as well. So we see that corporations that have a heavy amount of influence or a heavy amount of regulation or potential regulation from cities are spending more and more money. The second part of- The second part I want to do is, for those who have the ordinance in front of them, just point out a couple of the numbers and explain where these numbers came from. And I'll start on page three. This is the section that speaks to foreign influence corporations. It's section 1043A. And so this section applies to any corporation that makes an independent expenditure on a municipal election, which is a mayoral or a city council race, of $5,000 or more. That $5,000 is informed by existing state reporting requirements. Once any person, including a corporation, spends $5,000, they have to begin making periodic reports of how much money they do spend to the state. At the same time, if a corporation were to spend $500, they already have to register as a political committee with the state. So this limit is not only matching and drawn from the state reporting requirement, but is tenfold the amount that a corporation could spend before they would have to also register as a political committee. A little bit further down the page, under section 1044, this is the, this is the part applying to municipally-active outside spending groups, so what we refer to in shorthand as super PACs. The language here that's used designate, record, and account for by a secondary depository or separate interest-bearing campaign account, that's reflective of Florida law. Florida state law is pretty strict on where campaign funding can come from, how you designate a primary account, a secondary account. And so what this does is there are super PACs that will spend, they'll collect money from all across the country, say, but they'll spend on races all across the country, too. And so it's really hard to keep track of if you want to limit contributions where that money's coming from. And so what this says to the treasurer of a super PAC is, if you decide to spend money in St. Petersburg, or you ask for money to spend on a St. Petersburg election, or you convey in your materials that you may be looking at spending on a St. Petersburg election, you're going to have to designate, you're going to create a separate bucket and keep track of the money that is being raised to use for that purpose. And so that's how contribution limits are limited to $5,000. If the super PAC wants to spend on other local elections, they can raise and spend as much as they want still. This is only applied to the spending that they plan or actually do do in St. Petersburg elections. On the next page, under section B of that same, part B of that same section, the limit, the contribution limit is $5,000. And it's important to note that state law regulates super PACs at lower thresholds already. Anytime a super PAC raises money, it has to report even a single dollar in contributions to the state. Once they receive $500 in contributions, they have to register as a political committee. So this is drawn from that same threshold that state law uses. And then finally, I would point out the enforcement mechanism for this. So part D of that same section, section 1044, says that it shall be unlawful for the treasurer of a effective super PAC to make or authorize dispersments in violation of this section. And the term unlawful is from St. Pete's City Code. It is the general penalty clause. It's a $500 fine, no more imprisonment than 60 days, but it defaults on what the city has chosen to use as its lowest threshold for a punishment or an enforcement measure. So again, please consider me a resource for the details on the ordinance. I'm more than happy to answer any technical questions you have about it. And thanks again for having me here.
Thank you, Scott, and it's great to have you back here. And we'll have some closing comments from John, John Bonifaz, president of Free Speech for People.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you all for being here today and holding this meeting. I really don't want to take any further time. I'm here to help answer questions, but we very much appreciate you considering this proposed ordinance.
Thank you. So I spoke with our chief attorney, Jackie Kovalarch, a number of times about what we, the purpose of today's presentation and discussion would be, spoken to a much lesser extent with Mr. Patner. And as I said before, I'm not seeking a vote today. I think this was a lot of information to go over and to start to digest. My thought was that we would start to flag issues or identify areas where we need some more questions asked. Here, the, our city attorneys, you know, first impressions and takes on this. But I see clearly that we probably would need to schedule another committee of the whole meeting after the year to kind of bring this discussion to a more final point. Jackie, if you wanted to add to that.
Sure. Given the opportunity, I'll just comment for a few moments. Appreciate the opportunity to hear from everyone. I've spoken on the phone with some of y'all at some length and read everything you sent me, including some things I was given as of this morning. I appreciate it. You know, when the city attorney's office brings forth an ordinance to y'all, we vet it. And we vet it by looking at, hey, what have other cities and states done? What kind of court cases or precedent is out there? So that when we bring you something, we can say, hey, we feel good about this. Doesn't immunize us from lawsuit, of course, and we've tackled some controversial topics in the past, but we've done so with our eyes open and us having gone through it and advising you, well, this may be controversial, we feel good about it based on what's happened in other places, in other court cases. You know, this is different. It did not originate with us. It came from an outside group, which is not necessarily bad. But in my opinion, this is very risky. It's contrary to the current state of the law. I agree with Professor Al Schuler along those lines. There is no supporting law for what's being sought here. In my opinion, as a practitioner in the field, it exposes the city to liability, possibly substantial liability. I think it's good policy, but bad law as of this time as we sit here. You know, I feel one of my chief goals and one of the office's chief goals is to look for ways to keep the city from getting sued. It's kind of anathemic to us to look for ways to encourage or induce a lawsuit. You know, for somebody who litigates every day, litigation is messy, it's unpredictable. I mean, I could sit here and tell you anything. At the end of the day, you know, we don't really know what's going to happen down the road. But what I, it's predictable in its unpredictability. However, it's inevitably expensive. And it's important for me to at least state that. I am in no means an election law expert. I bat down to the superior knowledge of the ins and outs of the folks you've heard from. However, I've been a team, I've been a part of a team of five lawyers who've spent, you know, ever since this has been referred to Committee of the Hall, we've done our due diligence. And we have gone through the ordinance, and I stand by the conclusions and assessments that I've made. I'm not here to make a recommendation one way or another, other than to say, I believe there is substantial risk. And proceeding forward is just a question of, are you risk adverse or risk tolerant to what could be substantial city liability? That said, if there are any more specific questions, we could talk about that, but I think I made my point.
With that, Councilmember Dialogue? Councilmember Nurse?
Is the premise here that we're going to, that this will, that we will be sued and that therefore it'll have to go up presumably to the Supreme Court?
No, if I may clarify on this point, the premise here is that this ordinance is constitutionally defensible if the city were to be sued. But in fact, there's no guarantee that the city will be sued. This is written to Professor Al Schuler's point, because I'm not sure based on the comment just made from the city attorney's office, that it was understood. The 11th Circuit has remained silent on the question of speech now. It has not followed speech now. And neither has the Florida Supreme Court. And so in fact, it's quite possible, I'm not going to suggest that there's 100% guarantee either way, but it's quite possible that the city decides it wants to pass this ordinance to protect elections in the city of St. Petersburg, and no one decides to challenge that ordinance. And if that is the case, the law of the land in St. Petersburg will be that super PACs are effectively abolished, that there are donation limits on what you can give to a political action committee, and that foreign nationals will not be able to influence local elections via the corporate form in accordance with the way the ordinance has been written.
Now, yesterday, when I made a campaign contribution, did I remember correctly that at the very end of it I had to testify that I was an American? Didn't I have to check off something that said I was an American?
Yes.
But a foreign influence corporation does not have to do that?
Correct.
Is that because the law is silent? Or is that a, or is that, does that come out of speech now?
Commissioner Weintraub, do you want to?
Well, there, the law is very clear that foreign nationals are not allowed to contribute. There is no requirement that you check that box, but many political entities that are seeking your funds will, as a compliance measure, so that they are in a position to assure the FEC, among others, that they're following the law and all their contributions are legal, they will ask you that question. They will ask you to check that box. I am not aware of super PACs that are making the same request of corporations, that they certify that they are, have no foreign owners, the, so it's not, it's not a requirement that you check that box in the first place, but I don't think corporations are being asked to check that same box.
Let me ask a super PAC question. I thought super PACs were allegedly supposed to be independent. But I mean, I have seen in our own city campaigns where the campaign manager sets up a super PAC so that when a donor hits the limit, they direct money elsewhere. Isn't that a common experience?
Yes. That's a very common experience. I mean, most of, a lot of these super PACs, I mean particularly these, the big ones, are run by people who are very close to the candidates that they are supporting. They've been, they've been involved in the candidates' prior campaigns, they've, they've held positions in government with the candidates. That doesn't mean that they've illegally coordinated the expenditure. The candidate can raise money for the super PAC within solid, and urge people to support the super, he can speak to super PAC gatherings. He can thank donors to the super PACs. I think I had a footnote in my letter, if you look at the, at the whole letter, where some, very, very recently, somebody sends out a solicitation to a billionaire, and he says, "We are the super PAC blessed by Senator so-and-so. We both worked for him, you know, I was his chief of staff," and so-and-so, you know, I'm very close to this. So none of that seems to qualify as illegal coordination. And I mean, you can, if you put something out on public, if you tell the public, "We're concentrating on these swing states." That's not, you know, the, the super PAC can pick that up and concentrate on the same swing states. And that's not illegal coordination. So there's a lot of coordination.
Well, let me, let me weigh in on this, because this is a subject that is very controversial at the Federal Election Commission. As you may know, it's a six-member body, no more than three can be from one political party, and every time these issues come up, we split down the middle, three-three. I think what you have described is illegal, and I'm pretty sure that two of my colleagues would agree with me, but not necessarily three. But the specific fact pattern that you suggested, and we've seen all sorts of people who are very close to the candidate who have set up super PACs, the campaign manager himself, that, I think, is a step too far, even under the current regime.
A former campaign manager.
A former campaign manager, maybe. But the current campaign manager, actually, there was a criminal case brought against someone who did exactly that in Virginia, and that guy went to jail. So there, there are some limits that everyone agrees to. There are more limits that some of us would like to enact and don't have the votes to do it.
I would just like to say that super PACs are relatively new experience in our town, but they were quite active in the last two election cycles. What percentage of the, of the revenue was raised by them? How would I possibly know? Except that you can see the results of it, which would suggest it may be a third, perhaps half of the money. You know, I, I think of that cliche, that all that is necessary for evil to prevail is for good men to do nothing. And I would rather not do nothing. So that's, that's where I start from.
Councilmember Gertis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First thing I want to do is thank Darden for her continued history of the courage to raise issues that, you know, may not be popular from a majority standpoint, but are, that are serious issues that deserve serious discussion and dialogue. And whatever comes out of that process, whether you're for or against it, the dialogue and the exchange and the conversation helps all of us. And you have a long history of that before you were ever elected, and I hope you continue to do that. So thank you, thank you for bringing this. I know you wish the timing was better, in the sense that we've got some other serious issues going on. Not that this isn't a serious issue, but. So I also want to thank Scott and John for coming back. My first meeting with you was, was very impressive to me. I think I shared my gratitude with you for, for spending time and the work you've done on this and, and that I had concluded in the short time that we had spent together that I thought their legal strategy, facing the fact that the existing law isn't on their side, was well thought out, taking pieces of it that, that you thought were logically, rationally, intellectually supportable, and putting that together, I thought was, was a good approach, instead of just kind of, you know, a bull in a china shop. And so thank you for being here again. And to our distinguished guests that have spent time with us today and have spent time in St. Petersburg and Gulfport today, thank you. I hope you enjoy our city. And maybe we'll get to see you again in other meetings or other places. But so I'm very concerned about, you know, ideologically, intellectually, logically, I'm on the same page as you have laid out. The inconsistencies and the contradictions in the law and, and the kind of examples, the real-world examples you've talked about, you know, are bothersome and, I think that's a mild word. But, you know, to speak to what Joe said, you know, this is going to sound grandiose and all that, but I, it's the best example I can come up with off the top of my head, you know. Brown versus Board of Education was a case where, and all those civil rights cases, right?
Absolutely.
Were cases where the existing law wasn't on their side. You know, the chances of them prevailing in a constitutional challenge were, were, you know, slim and none. If you got objective legal advice from a practitioner, and as a practitioner, I would tell my client, don't do this. But as a policymaker, I have to look at it, I think, from a different lens than I would as a practitioner advising a client. So I appreciate your objective advice, and I think it's good advice, because you should never advise your client to do something that the current law doesn't support. But so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, I'm okay with saying, you know what, separate is not equal, this is wrong, this is wrong on moral grounds, this is wrong on intellectual grounds, this is wrong on legal analysis grounds. But in that context, a community of young people were being hurt, students were being hurt, parents were being hurt. Where I'm not at yet, as courageous as I'd like to be, and as bold as you've invited us to be, where I'm not at yet is, and several of you use this word, potential problem. At our level, it is a potential problem in the sense that the corruption, the, the lack of transparency, the lack of accountability that's happening at state congressional and federal presidential election level.